Guys, welcome to the I Love Seaville Show. My name is Jerry Miller. Thank you kindly for joining us. We're live in Charlottesville, the Commonwealth, the country on the I Love Seaville Network. We're presented by Ting Fiber Internet, crazy fast internet, Ting Fiber Internet, iloveceville.ting.com if you'd like to save $288 on the best internet possible. Today's program is going to be dynamic. Juan Diego Wade is in the house. This is his third rodeo on the I Love Seaville Network. This gentleman is making a push for Charlottesville City Council. It is election season. Yesterday Yaz was in the house. Brian Pinkston, I believe, next week. Today Juan Diego Wade. Judah Wickauer, studio camera, if you could, we will welcome Juan Diego to the show. My friend, how are you? How are you feeling?
I'm doing great. Thank you for the opportunity to come and talk with you again and share my vision for Charlottesville. I'm so positive about the outlook for this city when we all can work together. I'm just happy to be here.
So I'm happy to have you. Give us some insight into how the campaign's going.
Yeah, well, thank you. So, you know, as I said before I started this journey internally last March, last April, once I made the decision to do it, I spent a few months just thinking about what it would look like, how I would go about it. And then, of course, about a month ago, January 11th, I made my public announcement. And for the last six weeks or so, man, I said on January 11th I was going to be out there listening and listening to the, and sharing my vision for the city of Charlottesville. And by word, I've been doing that. I've probably talked to hundreds of people about my vision. And it may have been partisan, but I think it's been well received, Jerry. I've been talking to a lot of people about what I think Charlottesville should do in the future in its direction, and I think it's been very well, well received.
So much to cover, and we'll try to cover it all here. Let's talk about the platform. Let's talk first, education. Huge part of your background being on the school board here.
Yeah.
Give me some key tenants of your platform in regards to education. We know that the gap is expanding between the haves and have-nots when it comes to education.
So, yes, and so for roughly the last year, the majority of our students have not had in-person learning. And that has been, it really pains me. I tell people of my personal plight is my daughter, who graduated from high school last year, and that she wasn't able to have a regular graduation or have a regular prom, or just any of the fall sports, she was decided to join the tennis team. Just some of the things that you think of as a senior in high school that you couldn't do. And then not being able to make those tough decisions not to do it in the fall. We know that some of our students in our environment of virtual thrive, but many of our students did not. You know, some because just their learning style, others because they didn't have the technology for whatever reasons. But we as a school board, and on top of that, we were receiving hundreds of comments, maybe even thousands to this point, whether we should stay or go. And there were many on both sides, probably equal, to say we definitely should not go back to school because the virus is spreading, and many to say that we should go back because of this study and that study. And we as a board, we just had to kind of take that in and make the decision that we think that is best. And so now that we're really looking at, okay, it looks like in the fall and maybe even later this year, we should be able to come back, we're going to look at and see where we are. And I personally talked with the superintendent about what type of measures can we step, we put in place. And we know that we've hired some extra counselors because this has been really difficult on a lot of students. And so we're going to have that in place. But also hiring extra tutors. We probably have an extended summer school or a more robust summer school. We're looking at that. Additionally, I would like for us to look at things like maybe extending the school year next year by, I don't know, 15, 20 minutes. We really haven't gotten to the details yet. That over a course of a year could add up to quite a bit of time, maybe even several weeks of school learning time. So we need to look at all of those things, see exactly what our students need to, you know, and a lot of people are calling it achievement gap. I'm calling it an opportunity gap that we have for, you know, many of our students in this district because we have, we serve a broad range of students, a lot with financial means, a lot with low wealth means. And so we just need to be able to see where we are with the students and get everyone back on track.
School reconfiguration is like such a hot topic now.
It is.
And two Tuesdays ago, at the last city council meeting, the topic went kind of like this. We have school reconfiguration. We have a massive West Main Street skate project. And they seem to be almost competing because the dollars we have, as you know, are limited, and they're more limited than ever because of the impact of COVID.
Yeah.
I guess why don't I start with an open-ended question with school reconfiguration? Where do you stand? How does it play out? I mean, do we know a price tag yet? It's penciled in at 50 million. I can't see it coming in at 50 million.
So, yeah, this is, you know, with my school hat on and with the, with the hopeful wishes that next year I will have my city council hat on, that 50 million dollars is probably, you know, a good figure to put in now. It could be a little bit higher, hopefully a little bit lower. During this times now, the economy for a lot of people is not very good, but for the construction business is really tough. I mean, in that they're very busy right now. So it's not like the, that you can get a good price, you know, for construction. And so I think that as a school, we need that. I've been on school boards 16 years, and that has been one of our top priorities for many years. And for many years, we've said, okay, we understand you have to take care of the sewer lines and the water lines and things. So we've stood in line for those improvements. And now I think that the price is not going to get any cheaper if we keep putting it off. I just think as a city, as a community, we need to sit down and figure this out because we have, you know, the West Main Street. I've heard that we have housing concerns as I'm listening. We have the schools. We have the parking garage. I've heard a lot about that. And so I think as a community, we need to sit down and kind of recalibrate where we are. There are priorities that we have in the community to sit down and determine for the West Main Street project. That that is a priority. We have to realize that if we give money to schools, if we give money to housing, if we give money to this, that it's not taking away money from another thing. This is a very complex problem, so it's going to have to have complex solutions. And that we have to sit down and figure out how are we going to move forward? How are we going to be able to divide up with the schools? Can, how can we do those phases, maybe fund some now and fund some later? With the economic development, whether that's West Main Street or the downtown mall or the corner, that the studies show that every dollar that you put into it, you're going to get four or five dollars back. And so we have to realize as a community, that's an investment that we're going to have to be able to maybe fund some of those housing, some of those job readiness type of programs. But we have to sit down as a community and respect each other's point of view so that we can come up with, it's not going to be an A, B, C type of solution. Again, these are going to be some very complex solutions, but I believe I've seen it over the last 15, 16 years that I'm serving on the school board and chair of other committees and boards, that when we put our collective minds together, we can address these community issues. Because I really believe no matter what point of view that you're coming from, that everyone has what's best for the city, and that's to thrive. But right now, it seems like a lot of people are working in their silos. And I consider myself a great listener and someone that can bring these, as a consensus builder, that we have to bring these various interests together in unison so that we can move the city forward. That's what, that's what I consider my strength, and that's what I would want to do if I'm elected to city council.
I think that's a strength. There's no question you're a leader, and people gravitate to you and follow you. That's no question. I'll ask you, I'll ask you a direct question here.
Yes.
If you're elected, how will you vote in regards to this West Main Street skate project? I mean, we're talking 52 million, something that's been in the works since 1988, which I learned from Kathy Galvin earlier this week about. We know that the utilities underground already have to be replaced. We know 18 million of that 52 is coming from the Commonwealth. And if we don't take it, the city of Charlottesville, Orange County is going to grab the money for a roundabout, Orange County, Virginia. Five of that 52 million is going to come from UVA. So what would you do if you're on the dais?
So if next year this time, if I'm fortunate, I will be in city council, if that information is proposed, is listed, presented to me, if we have the opportunity that we will lose that money, I would likely support it. But I also would look at the whole picture because, again, it's not, you know, I know because I dealt with VDOT for the last 20 years of my life, I understand how these grants and these programs and things works. But for the last year, a lot of things have been, we have to recalibrate ourselves because of the last year. And if we can get a delay, if we need to, then that's something that I will look into. But I think that we need that because I know that that's the gateway between downtown and a university. And again, that economic engine will allow us to have more funds to fund these other programs that we want to do, the schools, the housing, the job programs and things like that. But again, we have to work together because it may be a possibility that for that project that we can do some of it and use some of the other money for other things. We just have to look at it. But I would be supportive of it because I understand the importance of it. But knowing that money for this particular program will allow us to be able to have more money for other programs that we want to fund, that we find that's a priority for the city of Charlottesville.
How far do we think we are away from like action from a school reconfiguration standpoint?
That is, that's an excellent question. This is a project that I know that has been in the city council, CIP, for many years. And CIP is a great placeholder because it's saying, okay, we do prioritize this project because it is in our scheme to fund this project once other projects are freed up. But I really don't know exactly, you know, where the projects stand as far as funding that's in front of it. So, you know, I would see where it stands. I know the importance of it. And this is, right now, is with my school boy hat on because it is a project that we believe it is one of the things that, you know, we need to really make our schools, you know, they're awesome now, but just really take it to the next level. Because we know with the different transitions that our students do with the elementary school stopping at, stopping at the fourth grade, you know, to, you know, to move things around. We really need to make these type of changes. It's very important that we prioritize this project.
Juan Diego Wade, guys, our guest, he's running for Charlottesville City Council. Questions are coming in. If you guys have questions for the candidate, please put them in the feed. I will relay them on air. So much I got to get to. The parking garage, Market Street, you've touched on it.
Yes.
Your thoughts. It's the centerpiece of the agreement with the county and the city to keep the courts downtown. Counselor Snook, who's an attorney, says maybe this isn't the best use of the money now because we're uncertain where parking demand is going to be long-term due to COVID. What do you think about this topic?
Yeah, yeah, that is something that, again, we, you know, a lot has to be recalibrated because parking demands may have changed. I know when I was doing transportation planning for many years, we looked at, okay, this is an office building, 450 square feet. The IT manual says it has to have this many of parking spaces, and it's going to create this much traffic. Well, you know, after the last year, a lot of companies are saying, you know what? We realized a lot of things that we can do via Zoom. We don't have to have them here. And so a lot of demands and things have changed over the last year. Even though we're going to come out of this pandemic, I think that a lot of demands, a lot of social norms and business norms, they're really going to change. And I think that that's something that we need to look at. I'm not ready to prepare to make a definitive statement like Mr. Snook because he's privy to a lot more information than I am. But again, and I don't want to seem like I'm just pushing off, trying to delay information, but I know that as a school board member now that it's probably a lot more information that I have as an elected member than Lloyd and other school, you know, city counselors have. But I think that is something I think that we can look at, that the demands, not just for the parking garage and things, I think that they all really are going to change. And maybe, you know, I came here, I drove here today, was plenty of parking spaces, you know, available. But I just think that we need to definitely look at that.
When you were meeting people in the city to rally and gain momentum for your campaign, what are some of the common things you're hearing? What are folks saying about the perception or the dysfunction amongst leadership? Is that something you're hearing?
It is, it is. And, you know, and, you know, I really don't want to comment too much on that because I know that our current elected members, they have a very difficult job. I understand. I'm on the school board, and I know that we are, you know, some of our decisions and things that we make are not popular, and I understand that. But I am hearing that they don't know what's going on because many of them have just kind of tuned out because usually what they hear is not, is not good. Even though there's a lot of good things that are going on, usually the media would lead with, you know, the negative. And so I'm definitely hearing about that and that I believe that I will bring some positive, measured, calm leadership to the council. That's the skill set that I have, that I would want to bring. And just knowing governance, knowing how, you know, that when you have a good leader, like we have in our superintendent, that, you know, you let them do their job and you do what you were elected to do, set policy, approve the budget and, and approve the budget, hire the city manager, for the most part, are the duties of the council. But I understand in this community, as a school board, that is much more relational. That I know that people will be contacting council and board about a policy issue or a community issue. And we, and I know that when I get that, that I need to direct it to the city manager to, you know, to take care of it. Something else that I'm hearing about is the issue of housing, you know, something that, and these are things that didn't surprise me. Something that did surprise me that I'm hearing about is that several people said that, you know, it seems like the city has a lot more litter, you know, around town. And, you know, I didn't realize that, but as I was hearing it and I'm driving around, it's like, you know, it does seem to be a little bit more litter. And I think that's, these are very solvable and doable things, either with our current staff, or I think it's a great kind of collective community effort to adopt a highway or do something, how they can feel more invested in the community that they live and I believe most residents love.
I will throw this to you. Been here 20 years, came here as a first year at UVA. Got multiple businesses we run here in Charlottesville.
Yeah.
Like you, this community means so much to us. I can't wait to see my kid grow up like your daughter's grown up, to just like this spectacular adult.
Yes.
I'm worried, and just being a straight shooter here.
Yes, sir.
I'm worried that when I, because I watch the meetings like you, and I'm worried that when others are watching and they see the arguing and the bickering amongst council, that they don't pay attention to anything else besides that. They choose to, and it's just human nature. They get caught up in the drama, like you said, we all do.
Yeah.
And we're not following the West Main Street skate project as closely, or school reconfiguration, or affordable housing. So I guess from my standpoint, and I'm just a regular guy here, from my standpoint, if the perception is arguing and bickering, it would seem like that's the first place to start, right? From a leadership standpoint? Am I reading this wrong?
Yes, yes. I mean, no, no, I understand what you're saying. And, you know, I think that, that right now, again, we're doing these things virtually. I think that has a big impact on things you say, you feel, because you're not able to...
Next to the person.
Yeah, looking them in the eye. But I think that once we're able to get back together and hopefully later this year, we as a school board, we're starting to talk about when we can meet in person again. And I'm sure the council will be able to, will be doing that again. Is that we just need to, you know, we would probably never agree on certain things, and that's fine. You know, we have to understand that. But if I can respect your point of view and you can respect mine and understand that we may be kind of from a different way, but we both love this city because we have, we're on the city council, and that's not something that you do because you have some free time.
Yeah, it ain't for the money or free time. It's because you care about Charlottesville.
Because you care about, so if we can respect that they both, as a council and as a public, that we both want what's best for the city, then we can approach it from, okay, well, let's, let's respect each other's point of view. Whether you're a council person's doing that or the public, and someone comes up to say something against you, that we have to respect one another, man, man, we can move mountains.
Why is that not happening now?
Man, that is a good question. I think that, you know, and that, and I'm saying this to someone who is on the school board, that I think that that has to start from the top, and that's us as the school board and the council. And I know that they're working towards that. I'm not, I don't know everything that's going on there, but I think that, that, that has been really hard because I'm trying to think that this is probably, for the most part, the new council persons, they have probably been meeting virtually.
Yeah, I was talking with Counselor Snook, Counselor McGill, and Counselor Payne. Michael Payne, straight up, two days ago, who said since COVID hit, right after they got into office, he's had barely an opportunity to get to know people in city hall. Same for Cena and Lloyd.
Yeah, yeah. And so I just think that, that, you know, that, that relationship hasn't been built. You know, I know that when we first got on the school board and we first meet new members, and many times the most fruitful how a relationship really developed, whether we're at conferences, having dinner together afterwards, or after a meeting, walking to the parking lot, to the car, that's when those relationships and stuff, you really start, well, how was your day? How's your, your family doing? What, those type of things, you really kind of know that person other than just a council person or a school board member. And that's really been, been missing. I believe I'm projecting this on city council, but I know it is for the school board. And so it's been, you know, I just, I can't answer why it hasn't been happened, but I believe that it should happen. Respect.
Yeah.
Respect.
Absolutely, absolutely. For, let's see, we've had Maurice Jones, we've had Mike Murphy, we've had Dr. Richardson, we've had John Blair, and now Mr. Chip Boils.
Yeah.
So that's five city managers. These guys are paid roughly a quarter million dollars a year in total compensation with the benefits, the vacation, et cetera.
Yes.
Quarter million dollars a year, five city managers in less than four years.
Yeah.
What do you make of that?
Yeah, yeah. I mean, it's tough being on top in that role. Very few, I mean, I know that that's a high turnover, but very few, you know, city managers are in those roles for a long time. But I've used this as an example, you know, for me personally, is that, you know, you want to take the time and energy to hire a candidate you believe that will be a good fit. And I know some of them were temps and things we had to do, we had to do as a city. But you need to invest in that, get public input, you make sure you feel good about it as, as a board or a council. Because that is going to, you know, will be doing the day-to-day operations of your organization. And I think that hopefully with Chip, and I know Chip very well, that we're able to now move forward. And I'm not sure if he's going to be a candidate for the permanent one, whatever it is, but I know that Chip has experience of dealing with localities and organizations that, you know, in the position that Charlottesville is in. And so if we are, as a, as city of Charlottesville will be next year or in two years, looking to hire or it on a more permanent basis, we just need to make sure that we feel good about that candidate with the public input, with we as the board and staff feels like that that will be a good fit for our community.
The national search firm that was tapped to find a full-time city manager,
Yeah.
they pieced out. They said to us literally that there's so much dysfunction here that we can't hire, we can't find anyone for this role. And they were on a 40, $50,000 contract. They got like 10 or 15% of that and said, we can't do this anymore.
So what I would say to that is that, you know, we do need to make sure, because I understand it will be hard to attract, you know, top candidates, not only for the city manager, but for the other open positions we have as department heads and key staff, until they understand that, again, us at the top, that we are working collective. And not that we are going to, you know, agree to everything and, but that we can, again, respect one another and make those difficult decisions, but do it respectfully.
What's your, what's your take when it comes to the police force? I'll throw a lot to you here. Police force, there's a large portion of the community that is asking for defunding of some capacity of the police force. A large portion of the Charlottesville community feels that the, a large portion of the budget, too much of the budget is being allocated to police. There's a large portion that's on the flip side of that, that wants the police to be more empowered. It's a tough time because we have to keep this level of trust
Yes.
with our police, a critical component to maintaining safety here. For a large portion of the community, that trust is not there.
Yeah.
What do you make? What do you think?
So that is one of the issues that I have heard a lot over the last six, seven weeks as I've been talking to the public. And, and that is something that we need to work on. What I've been telling people is that, you know, I've been volunteering with the police foundation for a few years now. And so I know that they're there for the betterment of the city. But I also have deep connections and relationships in the community of color here in Charlottesville. And I know that they have some trust issues, and I believe that I can help bridge that gap. Because again, I think they both want, and I've heard it from the public, is that they understand that the police force is needed, but the police force needs to understand that they're there to protect and serve the communities. And so there are a lot of things that we can do as a community to move forward on this. But we have to, again, get people at the table, you know, and the police department, I believe that they are ready, willing, and certainly able to have those conversations. We need to get the community there and see how we want the police department to perform and to move forward.
Do you have confidence in Chief Brackney?
I do, I do. I mean, I was, you know, I know that, I heard maybe a few months ago that she was one of the final candidates
For Dallas.
for an open position in Dallas. So, you know, I don't know if she will be here for, you know, you know, how long in the future, but I think that she's, I know that we as a school department, that we have worked closely with her, you know, because unfortunately, over the last few years, we have received several threats as a school department, and we work closely with the police department, just not on that, but in other respects as well. So if she is there, I would, you know, love the opportunity to work with her and her staff.
What do you make of your competition? We had Yaz on yesterday, Brian Pinkston, Mayor Walker's going to run for reelection. Four spot, four people, two spots.
Yeah. So I've spoken to all of them in some form or fashion, you know, over the last couple of months. I just met Ms. Washington. And what I feel good about is that, you know, although I want to be on council, if I, you know, if the public should see that, you know, they not vote me in, I feel good about the candidates that are out there. And that what I want to do, because I know, but, you know, Brian, Brian Pinkston, we actually live on the same block.
Really? I did not know that.
Yeah, yeah, that we are, that they love the city. Again, this is not something you get into because you want to be popular, that you wanted to do it for the money. Man, this is, it's, it's pretty tough.
Gruelling.
It is out there. I mean, just now, the campaign process, where you talking to a lot of people. But I feel, I feel good about the, you know, my vision because I've told my friends that, you know, when I'm out there talking to people, I'm not saying that my position is better than yours. I'm just really talking about what my vision is, what I want to do for the city. Because I want to move us forward in a positive manner, and I think that that is one way to do it, that we start off with that. I want to start from day one with respecting everyone. And I think that that is what I want to do, respect everyone. And again, that starts at the top.
I like that that's front and center of your campaign because I think that's missing right now. So I love that's a priority for you. I have to ask you this question because it's been in the news.
Yes.
The Facebook Live that the mayor did on Super Bowl Sunday, when she talked about the credit cards and using the credit cards to pay folks that, you know, $25 gift cards
Yes.
who spoke in front of city council. Joe Plantania, Commonwealth attorney, Charlottesville, says on Tuesday,
Yes.
"Look, I'm not going to prosecute charges, but the credit card policy has to be rewritten immediately."
Yes.
Anywhere you want to go on this topic.
Well, I, I think that, that, you know, Joe has said it, what, what, what needs to be done. We need to, to develop a, a, a policy. I know for the, the, the school board, we just, we take a different approach. We, you know.
Do you guys have credit cards?
We, we, we don't. We, you know, if we go to a conference or it's usually, we haven't been to one in a while, but we, you know, they kind of tell us that maybe for lunch. Breakfast, you have five dollars or seven dollars and lunch, you have this. And we don't, we submit um, receipts.
Right.
When we get back, you know, from.
So it's your own debit card or credit card and then they reimburse you?
We reimburse and sometimes, you know, we may have, you know, make over, you know, for, you know, for a few dollars, whatever. And, and, you know, and so for me. Uh, that's very comforting to, to me that, you know, I submitted to the clerk and, and she would tell me, you know, this fine. But if something is amiss, then, then they'll let me know. So, you know, um, that, that way, that's certainly the way that if I'm fortunate enough to get on. That I would, would um, operate.
Right. And I think that's how, you know, just being genuine here, that's how we all, most of us would operate, right? So the, the concern that I had with, last, last one on this topic here, the concern I had with the credit cards was the um, the trust. My concern was it, it, it eroded trust. Even if the policy was so vague that there was no wrongdoing done legally.
Yes.
The trust perception was eroded. Do you see what I'm saying?
The trust.
With the public and, and, and this, and, and an elected official who is using the card to pay folks to speak in front of council meetings.
Yes.
I mean, if, do you, do you, do you see where I'm?
I, I, I do and I understand what you're saying. And I'm sure that several people feel that way, but you have to, you know, and I know that several people in the community don't feel that way. As I have reached out and talked to a lot of different people. And, and again, you know, I'm all about, you know, respecting and, and communication is, is key. And so I think now that we know, let's just develop a, a policy. Cause I understand that, that it was requested that it was done that.
Years ago.
Yes, yeah.
Plantania brought it up to city hall years ago.
Yeah.
And he said, he said, I naively thought they would do a policy when the Commonwealth attorney says you need to do a policy, right?
Yeah.
And they didn't do it.
We need to do a policy. There needs to be a policy on it. So there's, that it's clear. And so we want to have this in, in, in the future. Um, and um, I think that we will be able to, with all of the things that we have to address in the city, uh, we can move on um, from this. We have to move on from it because we're a bigger fish to fry, if you will. And um, and I think that we, we can, again, we have to.
I was having a good conversation with Mr. Herb Porter.
Yes.
Fifeville Neighborhood Association president, long time, he's not currently.
Right.
Um, and we were talking, um, we were talking public housing.
Yes.
Um, and he brought up two points to me that I've really been thinking about. And he said, have you noticed that the public housing in Charlottesville, it's done in pockets? So it's not um, the public housing um, spread out through Charlottesville. It's pocketed in areas of Charlottesville. Um, and, and public housing, for example, students, um, children that live in public housing. Um, it's not spread out through all the schools. It's only in a couple of schools, um, the students that live in public housing. And his concern was, his concern was if we go about public housing this way, it's not going to create diversity. It's going to create pockets of vulnerability that folks will never be able to escape. What do you think of that topic?
So I think that, you know, um, as we move through this process, um, that, you know, we definitely can look at the zoning um, for the city. To see where it um, where changes um, could be made. But it's not a lot of big areas in Charlottesville. That we can put apartment complexes or, or, you know, big places like, you know, if you're thinking of, um, they're probably thinking of West Haven. And maybe Friendship Court. There's just not a lot of parcels that, that I'm aware of without doing some significant um, you know, infrastructure improvements. And things like that, that that's going to happen. So they are going to be kind of, you know, duplexes and quadplexes and things like that. But we just need to look at where that needs um, to be and, and what it will look like. And um, and so I think as someone who has a background in planning, that we need to have those, those um, when we updating the comprehensive plan, having that input. And input for me will look a lot different than we've had it before. Where we will have a meeting and, you know, at five or six or seven o'clock and expect the public to come. We still can have those, but I think that we need to be more proactive, go to those families and those communities where we know that it's usually been under representative. Um, represented it and, and talk with individuals, you know, even if it's walking and they're on a, um, front porch or wherever. Because to get that input, because that's what I do. I did a lot this, this time when I was getting some voter um, registration. And um, they're not shy to share their input. They're not shy at all to share their input, but it's going to them. And so we just need to kind of also look at public input a lot differently than we're, we're doing now.
Did you see that uh, listing we posted on Facebook? It was a six hundred and seventy-five thousand dollar asking price for a home in Fifeville on Knoll Street. It took four days for this home, six hundred and seventy-five thousand, twenty-five hundred square feet, point one-two, the lot size.
Not, not one point two.
Point one-two, zero point one-two. So that's like a postage stamp lot.
Yeah.
Six hundred and seventy-five ask, four days it went under a contract. The home, two doors down from this one, no running water. Okay? So the reason I bring this up to you is, man, Juan Diego, Charlottesville is getting more and more expensive.
Yeah, yeah. We have to really look at a creative solution um, to the housing. It's just not one way to, to address it, the Affordable Housing Fund certainly is one component. We need to look at continued to fund programs, I believe, like AIP, which works actively to um, keep, you know, residents in their home. Um, with ma- making relatively minor im- improvements so that they can stay there. But also we need to craft laws that if that person, if they live there and they want to stay there, they can do that. But if they want to cash out on American Dream of, you know, in, in sale or whatever, then it has to be flexible enough to allow them to do it if they want to. And it's really hard to, to craft policy like that, but other localities around the country are doing that. I think that we just need to look and see how we can address that because it is getting really expensive to, to live here in, in Charlottesville.
Um, Alex Erpy, tell Juan Diego great answers, but we're going to have to talk about that Red Sox hat.
Yeah. So little quick story on that. My mother-in-law lives with me. She's ninety-four. And she moved to us from Hartford, Connecticut about seven years ago. And so she, I'm a big Red Sox fan because of that, so.
Olivia Branch is watching. We love Olivia Branch. She, she says, please vote for Juan Diego. He's the perfect candidate. He cares, he's compassionate, he's knowledgeable.
Thank you, Olivia.
Troy Robinson is watching.
Yes, my boy.
He's a good guy. Troy Robinson, he says, great answer, Juan Diego. Great answer right there.
Thank you.
Um, all right. So a lot I want to cover and we'll get to your questions here. You have a lot of questions from potential voters.
Yeah.
Um, people like you. You have a, a likable nature to you. I, I'm sure you've heard that before.
Well, thank you, sir.
People like, I like being around you.
Yeah.
You're a likable guy.
Thank you.
Um, let's throw, let's throw this to you. Downtown Mall.
Yes.
Crown jewel of Charlottesville.
Yes.
Um, these eight blocks in a lot of ways, one of the reasons people come here. The vacancy rate in a strong economy is less than one percent downtown. Right now, our vacancy rate is roughly twenty-five percent on the downtown mall. Um, and, and unfortunately, more, more businesses are going to close. What would you do if elected for, say, the downtown mall?
Yeah. So um, I would, you know, first of all, really sit down and talk with them and say, what, what do you need to thrive? Because I know, again, I know I said this before, but that isn't an investment. It's the crown jewel of, of Charlottesville as far as business. People um, come here specifically to walk up and down the downtown mall. What do they need to, to thrive? And I know one thing is that, you know, is, is lighting. We can, we can, we don't have to do a multi-thousand-dollar study to determine where the lights are. Ask the, ask the business owners. They know where the best place for the lightings are. Um, we need, we need to, I, I like to share with people this story. For me, the downtown mall is for, when my daughter was growing up, really up until a few years ago. The crown of my jewel was, of my week was to, after work on Fridays, go home, change clothes, get into something more comfortable. The misses and I would take our daughter and probably two or three of her friends, go to the Fridays after five, watch the show. Grab dinner and just walk up and down one side of the mall, seeing tens and hundreds of people that we know, walk back down the other. Still talking to people, same time, people are eating dinner and walking, getting ice cream. And then go home by eight, nine o'clock at night, exhausted, but loving every minute. I want that back.
I miss that.
Yes. And I think that we can get it, we can get it back. The business owners, I know that they, they, they want what's best for Charlottesville. And I think again, if we invest in downtown mall, we're not divesting from housing. We're not divesting from the West Main Street. We all understand that when one area thrives, we all going to thrive. And so um, you know, um, as, as far as, you know, what does the downtown mall need? We can look at seeing what would it cost that, you know, to get some extra um, people to specifically to clean. Um, you know, litter or whatever, just, you know, I've, I've been in different cities where they have um, business districts. And they have people to just work in that small area to do, take care of different issues. I think that, that it's not, you know, that's not like a totally creative type of thing. That's, that's something I think that we can sit down and figure out what that would, would look like. And find out what our, our businesses need um, to, to continue to, to thrive. So they, they can bring back people to um, hire, get the businesses going back. I think that that's very doable. We need to, we need the downtown mall back thriving and strong.
I agree. That was a great answer right there. Um, I missed that so much. Um, the Fridays after five, walking up and down the mall and seeing the community come together. We need that. Um, this question's coming in from Grace who's watching and she lives in Belmont. Jerry, please ask um, Mr. Wade, his thoughts on preserving historically African-American neighborhoods. Like Fifeville, Tenth and Page. Um, it seems from our perspective, and you talk about this on the show often, Jerry, that they're being gentrified very quickly.
Yes. And so I don't share this story widely, but I got my, you know, I talk about when I was walking last March. To, to run, I was actually walking in the Tenth and Page neighborhood. And I thought, man, I love this city. I care for this city. It was just walking in that environment that said that this is what I wanted to, to preserve. And just walking in that neighborhood, again, just a few days ago, just stopping to talk to my dear friend, George King, just happened to be out on his porch. I love that. The residents are still there, you know, watching the street, watching the people to walk by. We want to preserve that, man. We have to preserve that. Um, it's so special. The people um, are there. I think of my dear friend that, that live on, um, um, right behind McGinnis Lugo. Um, that I have her as part of my kind of ki- kitchen cabinet and elderly um, African-American um, female. That's lived there for, you know, decades. I want her to stay there as long as she want. We need to preserve that. And so that's how we need to craft our policies and things so that we can preserve that. But I also have seen walking in there is that you will have a house and right next to it is, man, it's a new modern house. That I'm sure that someone has probably purchased for, you know, sometimes a low price. And tear down the house and then build a new model. We just have to figure out a way how we can preserve those type. Because that is what really makes um, the, the, the city special. So yes, I will do everything that I can because I understand the importance of it. When I first got here thirty years ago, working with it. Um, you know, when I was in grad school, I did my senior thesis on the, the NAACP, a program that they had. And I got to talk to all of these wonderful people. Many of them have gone on now to see, to see the Lord. But um, that was where I got my foundation in Charlottesville, working in those communities, getting to know those individuals. We want to preserve it.
More questions coming in for you. This is a good one. Um, this is coming from Chris, who says he lives down Bridge Street. What's UVA's role in Charlottesville moving forward, Mr. Wade? It's this question.
Yes, great question. Um, I was fortunate enough that President Ryan elected me co-chair of the university community working group. Where we really tasked the university with addressing four or five issues that we think that they, the most pressing that we can address. I think the, the role that, that university and the community needs to play needs to be collaborative. Because they're here, the only reason I think the city is the way it is, is because of university. I think if we weren't, university wasn't here. That this community would look and feel a lot different. And some people may say, oh, that, that's good, but I think that it's for the, the betterment. I'm here because of the university.
Me too.
So I, I think that, that we need to move forward. I know that they've recently made a commitment to address affordable housing. But I also know that they're part of the problem. I think about when I was in grad school, I stayed behind the houses, right behind the corner. It's a little house there. And I think we have four or five guys in that house. This was in nineteen, I was here from nineteen eighty to nineteen ninety. Small house. Each of us had a, a room and we paid, I don't know, three or four hundred bucks.
Sounds like me. Same with me, yeah.
But back in the eighties, that room, that house, maybe if it was on the market, maybe it could rent it for five or six hundred bucks a month. But they were able to get triple that because they would, and so I understand the impact that that's having on the, the community for a regular family. This, that, um, you know, not a student or whatever, um, trying to find housing. I think that, that we are now, we can work together because we have relationships. I have a relationship with the university that we are able to move forward. So it has to be collaborative, working together, relationship with the university.
Stephen Coppinger in North Downtown has this question for you. I think it's a good one. Um, Juan Diego, if you're elected, how will you work with councillors Snook, McGill and Payne?
So um, I know Lloyd very well. We're on some scholarship and committees to- together. I, I've worked with him in the past. His, his mom cut, I cut my teeth on nonprofit, working with his mom with um, several nonprofits. I, I, and I know Cena and Michael very, I mean, not as well as I do Lloyd. But I, I feel like I can work with, with, I can, I can work with anyone. But I, I know that again, those two um, were passionate about um, um, the city. And that as long as we have that one common thing in mind, man, we, again, we can move mountains.
Um, this is another good question. This is coming from Jennifer. Jennifer is watching in Greenbrier. She says, can you ask the candidate's opinion on economic vitality and what he would do if elected to jumpstart the economy locally?
That's a great question. For the last ten years, I've, I've served as a career counsel, working with the businesses. You know, at the time to hire, um, to find employees because the economy was so well. And so I have those existing relationship with the business um, community. And so I, I could hit the ground running, already have those relationships. Knowing what do they need to promote their business? What do they need from the city to help them thrive? Because again, every dollar we put into it, to, to that, we have more money for the housing, for workforce development. Or, or other city um, priorities that we have. And so um, I will just work closely. Because I already know Chris and Holly and Economic Development Office. We've done tons of job fairs and other projects and things in the past. That is something that, uh, not that um, as council, I know I would not be working with them closely. But I understand when they come with us with a proposal, I was like, let's do it. We, we know, we, we know that that's what's, what's needed. But um, I think it's important and um, I, I would not only work with the existing business, but see what we can do to recruit new, smaller. Um, maybe minority businesses or um, you know, to, to create even more businesses in town.
Um, if you were elected, your term is four years. So you would start, what, January one, twenty twenty-two?
If I'm fortunate enough to get on, yes.
So it would be January one, twenty twenty-two, all the way till twenty twenty-six?
Yes.
I mean, that is a long time. So if you're elected, this is, this is a, uh, important topic. If you're elected. The legalization of retail cannabis happens during your, during your term.
Yes.
And if you're elected, the legalization of um, casinos.
Yeah.
Brick and mortar casinos in Virginia happens in your term. Why don't we start with cannabis?
Well, if it's going to be legal and we, um, and I, and I haven't really kept up closely with what's happening in Richmond. But I, you know, I believe that it's not like an issue now as to whether, you know, it's going to be.
It's completely decriminalized. If someone has possession, they don't get in trouble with the law. Um, and the governor has said by twenty twenty-three, it will be brick and mortar retail cannabis in Virginia.
Yeah. And so I, I think that we will look at it then, just like with any other, you know, um, business take, that will, will come to us. And, and, and I know this problem, but just like with, with, with gambling, there, there may be some, you know, information that if you feel like you're getting addicted to it. Or whatever, that we will have that information. But I would, I think that, you know, just, just me at this point without, you know, done, doing a lot of research. I think we will look at it just like if they were opening up a, a, you know, a regular retail store. You know, make sure they look at all of the rules and guidelines that we have in place. Because we, again, we have to look at it on a competitive nature. If we, you know, say have an ordinance or something that we don't want that. Then they're going, they may, they will likely go somewhere else and, and, um, and we want to, you know, have that tax base.
You want to capture the tax revenue.
Yeah, yeah. That, that's, that's the way I'm looking at it, you know, that's just.
I think that's the right way to look at it.
I mean, it may, that's, you know, um.
Cause they'll just drive across the line to the county or Fluvana or Louisa and they'll get the tax revenue.
Yeah. So that's. Yeah. So that's, that's the way I think that I would look at it at this point, just with the information that, that I know at this point.
Um, this election, and I said this on the show, is so important. You got not only the West Main Street scape, school reconfiguration, the Market Street garage, you got a budget that's in shambles because of COVID. We're, we're trying to figure out what to do with the statues. We're figuring out whether or not the city manager, we're going to open up a national search. You got cannabis, you got gambling, you got affordable housing, the rebuilding of Friendship Court. This is all happening during the four-year term of two spots coming up for grabs. What do you make of that? I mean, you're smiling. You're excited.
Yeah, delicious. That's.
You're ready to work.
Yeah. So I, I think that it will never be, um, a boring, um, council meeting, it sounds like. It'll always be something going on. And I think that's what you want in a thriving city. If you look at it on the flip side, what if nothing at all was happening? Then we would be a town that was, you know, losing business, losing population, not having, um, any value on the lane and things like that. So I, I think that with those type of initiatives, those type of programs, we just have to look at it as a community, how we want to move forward. And we have to make sure that we get everyone's, um, um, all the stakeholders' viewpoint and insight and perspective as we move forward to make policy and make decisions.
How do you, uh, how do you handle stress and when, when times get tough?
So.
Because I have a feeling if you're elected, you're going to have some stress and some tough times.
So that, that is something that, you know, many of my close friends have told me, they're like, Juan, we, we, we support you, we want you to move forward, but we don't want you to, um, change. And so it's a couple of things that, that I do. I'm a big, um, I, I crochet. Um, I crochet and I've been doing that for nearly 30 years. And so that's something. So if you should see me at a, I won't do it at council meeting, but maybe a, a work session or something crocheting, then that's one of the things that I do.
Anything you wear, you've made?
No, no, not, not that I have on now, but, um, my wife said no more Afghans or blankets for the house. So I have, we have a ministry at my church that I make them for or, and so I, we, um, I, I do that. Um, so I, I think that that's one thing. Um, it just really for walking, spending time with, with my, my wife, um.
Is she worried?
Well, I had to get her okay. And that was one of the things. I think that she's, she's a pretty cool cucumber herself. And, um, I think that, um, she, uh, she, she doesn't believe that she, she could, she could do it, um, because, um, you know, we don't, can't have two of them in, in the fam- you know, politicians in the family. But she's happy in her role. She works at the council center at, at, at UVA.
Your, um, legacy in this town is already like A plus, plus, plus. Like why, did you, is there any time you think, why am I doing this?
Well.
Because you already, you've already made a huge impact on the community.
Yes. Well, well, um, thank you. And so I appreciate that. And, and what I have done as far as how I lead and make decisions, big decisions, and I've said this before, is that I take the information from the public that I get from the staff and, and, and usually it's a staff report or something. And sometimes I talk it over with the misses, but I usually take it all in and I pray on it. And then I make, make my decision. And sometimes it's spot on. And sometimes, you know what? It's not. But I know that every night I go to bed, I sleep well because I know that I did everything that I could. And I didn't do it for personal reasons. I did it what, because I thought would, that it was the best. And that's the way that, um, that I have governed, not only on the school board, but for the nonprofits that I lead and have been part of. And, and that's how I intend to do it, um, and on city council.
I'm going to ask you, uh, the final question is like why folks should vote for you?
Yeah.
Um, and then, and then I'm, I know the answer, but I think everyone should hear it. This guy's got a great answer. He's got a great campaign and platform. I will ask you, and we asked you off air about this.
Yeah.
Can we do the, uh, the friendly debate with, uh, former counselor Kathy Galvin? And then as long as we get the schedules right.
Yes.
For everybody. So it would be, uh, potentially Brian Pinkston, yourself, Yaz Washington?
Yes.
Um, that would be fun. All right. So why don't we, uh, why don't we close with the, uh, the 87 million dollar question? Why should folks vote for you?
Well, thank you. So all of the information about my platform and about me, eventually I have some good old pictures up there.
You get the website, right?
Yes. Go to juan Diego wade dot com. But I want them to vote for me because this is who you're going to get, Juan Diego Wade, someone that loves and cares for, for this city. I will be able to hit the ground running from day one, have deep relationships, not only in the city hall, but in the community, that it won't be any, you know, wound up time for me. I will be ready to go and that, and that, that I will, no matter what, respect everyone's point of view and that I would never be negative. I will be positive in moving the city forward.
You're a breath of fresh air, man. Um, you, the interview was great. Um, you're great in this like long-form setting because people really just can get to know you.
Yeah.
And you're a likable dude.
Well, thank you, sir. Thank you. Thank you.
I'll shoot you an email and maybe we can get you back on in a couple of weeks.
I would love that.
Thank you so much for joining us.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Thank you, guys. Juan Diego Wade, um, thank you very much for joining us today on the show. Um, a lot more that we need to cover on today's program. I'd like to talk, um, well, first, let's give you some insight into tomorrow's guest. Tomorrow we have someone that's on the Board of Directors from the Haven on the program. Marquise Johnson is on the show tomorrow. So that's very exciting. Couple of items that I want to, uh, get off my chest before we get off air today. We really, 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 really need to follow the candidates who are running for council and learn about them and their platforms. I will continue to emphasize this on this program and on this network. On the 3rd of November, we elect two people. There's four people now running for two spots. Walker, Juan Diego Wade, Yaz Washington, Brian Pinkston, Mayor Nakia Walker. On the 3rd, we, two of those four are going to get a spot on council. The council on the 1st of January, for the next two years, those five people will make hugely impactful decisions. The type of decisions that will be felt for decades in Charlottesville. Whether or not to do the West Main Street scape is a decision that will be felt for decades in Charlottesville. If we choose not to do this project, that corridor, the impact will be felt for decades. If we choose not to do recent, school reconfiguration, if we choose not to go forward with the Market Street Parking Garage project, if we choose, um, if we, if we get a national search firm to find us a city manager, if Chip Boils is not the long-term guy, that's going to affect us for years. This is a straight up, the most important election this city has had in the history of Charlottesville. Now you can say the election right after August 12th, 2017 was important and it absolutely was. But we haven't even solved, we haven't even had our come to Jesus moment yet about August 12th, 2017 in this town. We still got the statues in the park, right? We don't know what's going to happen with this parking garage on Market Street. 25% of the downtown mall is currently vacant. You heard me correctly. A quarter of the downtown mall is vacant right now. We're not sure if we're going to do a 52 million dollar project on West Main that's been around since 1988. We've been talking about this project since 1988. Think about that. 1988. We don't know what's going to happen to our budget because we don't know when the economy is going to return back to form. The jobs in this community that created diversification, that, that created diversity amongst the people in Charlottesville, the jobs that helped create that diversity, those jobs are going away. Seriously. Please engage. Please listen to learn. Please follow the news. Please ask questions and please vote. Tomorrow, the Haven is in the spotlight with Marquise Johnson on the show, a board member from the Haven. It's going to be a good interview. My name is Jerry Miller. This is the I Love Seville Show on the I Love Seville Network. Thank you for joining us.